Please all rise. Marta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Ms. Marta Martin is here from Spain. She has served or been here a whole year, her sophomore year. And she is unfortunately leaving us to go back to Spain with her mother and father, and she has a younger sister. They did write down here that there is a seven-hour difference between here and Spain. And in the next few days, she will be flying out of here, and it's a 10-hour flight for her. So I'm going to come down to the podium. You can have anybody around you that you would like, because I want to present you with a few things from the city of Pekin. So first of all, like I said, we're going to present you with a few things from the city of Pekin. The first thing is a challenge coin from the mayor. So this was designed here, and on the back of it, it has the mighty dragon. I'm sure that you learned a lot about the Pekin dragons while you were here. Along with that is a city pen. And then we had some citizens that you're actually living with here in Pekin. They called us up and said, you know, they would love to see if you'd like to say a few words. If not, you've got coaches here that would like to say a few words for you. But we want to present you with this next. We actually, the mayor and the council, signed the city flag for you. So let's see, here we go. So this is our city flag, and it's signed by the mayor and the sixth council. So you get to take this back to Spain and show your friends back there, your family. So this is one thing, the challenge coin's another. Yeah, I hope you can get this all back to Spain. But the Chamber of Commerce, along with the city, we have, this is our 200-year anniversary. Have you learnt about that, too? A bicentennial, what, Pekin is 200 years old. So we've had things from, the students at the high school actually designed some of this stuff for us. So you have a little mighty dragon and keychains and all kinds of stuff from the Chamber of Commerce. So let's fold this up, Karen, for me. We can't thank you enough for choosing Pekin. For, I don't know if you had an opportunity when you were over there to actually say where you wanted to go? Did you have like, no? You did, they just said, this is where you're going to go. Well, welcome, I'm sorry, it's kind of bittersweet, I'm sorry to just meet you and that you have to leave, but thank you for coming here. I want to know if any of the students or Yvonne or, coaches, please come forward. I'd like for them to say a few words for you, okay? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Edgar Sandoval, I am the girls' soccer coach at Pekin. And Marta came out for the team this year, and we were so pleased that she did. Just a really hard worker and great attitude and really got in with the team as part of a family. And we're sorry to see her go, but we recognize she wants to go back home to her family. So we have this jersey, 2024, so she'll remember us when she goes back to Spain. She can hang that up or wear it or whatever she wants, but we're so glad you came out for soccer this year.
Well, Gus Quarma, boy soccer coach, assistant to Edgar. So Marta, I heard she was from Spain, I'm from Liberia. Soccer, Spain is one of the best soccer-playing countries, and she's never played soccer. She played basketball. I said, you're coming now. And she did, she came out and she didn't have a soccer cleat, so we had one. I found a soccer cleat, brought it to her, she turned it in after the season was done. We were just proud of her, she is a great example of what some of us want to tell these kids that are so entitled in Pekin and in America, that, you know, we have a lot here. And Marta was a great inspiration to some of our students, so Marta, we will miss you. I know you will stay in touch. Thank you, council.
Thank you. So what about Mrs. Hamilton? Yes, would you like to say a few words for her? Thank you, Karen.
Hi, I am Susan Hamilton, I teach Spanish and I'm a department chair at the high school. And Marta joined us in August, and part of my job is to work with our multilingual learners, our students who are non-English speakers. And I do a lot of helping with teaching and just kind of, I'm there to help with their academics and be sure that we are teaching in a way that they can understand. Except Marta didn't need my help, she's been a straight-A student, came with incredible English skills and has adapted incredibly well to her time here at Pekin. And she's made the most of that opportunity, joining athletics, joining all kinds of activities, obviously making some phenomenal friends and just being a really integral part of our community. And so we've been very fortunate to have her.
Thank you. Would you like to say something or?
Well, the only thing I got to say is, I'm going to miss her.
You know what, I bet you are. It's, first of all, it's not easy for her to come to a foreign country, and I'm sure you did probably teach us a thing or two. So with nothing else to say other than, we're going to miss you, and I just met you. Thank you so much. And so do you have foreign exchange students come to your home in Spain? No, no, okay. Well, thank you once again, have a safe trip home. And I'm sure. Please do, because I'm sure your friends are going to miss you, I have to have a hug. It's heartwarming. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anken?
Here.
Councilmember Oric?
Here.
Councilmember Nutter?
Here.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Here.
Councilmember Abel?
Here.
Councilmember Hills?
Here.
Mayor Burris?
Here. We have a quorum, we will conduct business. Chair would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Oric and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Is there any concerns or questions from the council?
I have one. Under, Sue, under consent agenda 6.3 says the billing is from May of 2024 to August 2024, but on the billing, it's January through April. So you want to correct it as we?
On the agenda.
On the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me good? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Chair would now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes, please.
I move the city council regular meeting of May 13th, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. And the regular city council meeting of April 22nd, 2024 at 5:30 p.m., as amended, be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Oric and second by Mr. Abel. Any comments? Questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We have now come to public input. Anybody wishing to have their voice heard, come to the podium. I do believe that we left the mic on, but make sure it's green when you come up there. And state your name, please. I'm not saying nothing. You just wanted to shut it off, or turn it on? Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else wanting to speak from the public? Seeing none, hearing none, public input is now closed. Come down to the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that consent agenda 6.1, accounts payable to be paid proofless through April 26, 2024; 6.2, financial reports, April 2024; and 6.3, Tazewell County Animal Control Building, January 2024 to April 2024, be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter. Pardon me?
Give me one second, we're looking at... So Mr. Nutter, it does look like the invoice is for the May through August, they just also gave us an activity list of the previous several months. So the invoice does say May through August on it.
So why are we paying May through August when we hadn't had any activity? Is it because of the contract we got to pay ahead of time?
Yeah, they're building like, they're building three times a year, so it's, would be the four-month block. If that makes sense, they changed how they bill, they used to do a monthly billing, now they're doing it like...
Quarterly?
It's not.
Not even that?
It's not quarterly, it's like three times a year.
Okay, I stand corrected then, thank you for the correction.
Thank you very much. So, motion was made by Mr. Nutter and second by Mr. Oric. Is there any questions or comments or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Chair would now entertain a motion for item number seven, public hea-, oh, excuse me, it's public hearing, I apologize. I always do that, and then I look down and see what I'm saying. So, Mr. Dossie, would you like to start out this public hearing, please?
Thank you, Mayor. HUD requires a submission of an annual action plan each year, which outlines how that year's federal allocation is going to be used. Within this document is the budget from the program year and an outline of the activities in which the city will undertake in the coming year. HUD has the authority to require changes to the plan and can delay funding if not submitted in a timely manner. As part of the creation and submission of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan, the city solicits feedback from residents to be considered and included in the feedback portion of the published document. The public has 30 days from the opening of the comment period, which began on May 27th, 2024, as advertised on the city's website and in the local papers, and ends June 28th, 2024. Briefly, the 2024-2025 program year's allocation is $440,364. This represents a 5% cut from last year's allocation. With these funds, the city will undertake the following activities. That include a demolition project, fire safety purchases, repayment of the Section 108 loan for the fire truck, engage in an economic development program, public service activities, and provide for administrative costs associated with the program. The funding breakdown is as follows. $105,000 for the demolition program, $93,864 for economic development activities, $88,000 for administrative costs, $70,000 for public services, $20,000 to replace fire equipment, $61,000 for the repayment of the Section 108 loan, and $2,500 for code enforcement. And Tina Hawke, CDBG Director Coordinator, is available for questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Hawke? Mr. Nutter?
The demo side, $105,000. And is that in addition to anything that's in code enforcement for demo?
The $105,000 is for the demolition activities alone, and there is the $2,500 for code enforcement uniforms. So I believe the answer to your question might be yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
And the other question is, public services, is that the social worker?
That is correct, it is.
So we'll have both money funded in the police department for code, for a social worker, and you'll have money here for the social worker also.
We will have money for the social worker as well as for a homeless initiative, for the demolition program, and for code enforcement uniforms, yes.
That's all I need, thank you.
If I could add, the, I believe the amount, though, that we have in CDBG does not include the benefit side of the social worker, right?
That is correct, it does not include the benefit side, it is only a small portion of the salary.
Right, it's not the whole salary.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So.
It's just to supplement the police, it's to supplement what the police are, and the net, we probably have a little bit of overlap, but it's not, it's not a mess, it's not the, we're not counting the person twice.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
I do need to close the public hearing now unless someone wants to come forward.
We can't close the public hearing until the public has had an opportunity to comment.
Does the public have anything they'd like to come and say? Hearing none. Public input is now closed at 5:50. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.1, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 142-24/25, approving annual support of Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Nutter and second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossie?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to have the Economic Development Director, Joshua Ray, speak on this, please.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is to approve the annual support of the Discover Pekin Initiative, run by the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is something the city has done for several years. The amount pre-COVID that was given to support this regional program was $25,000. It was taken down a little bit during COVID. And the Discover Peoria entity has asked for that to go back up to $25,000, which the Tourism Committee did believe was appropriate, because they are going to add an additional service of creating a Pekin-only tourism video. So they'll take video shots around town of the different festivals and events. And they work in close contact with Amy McCoy from the Chamber, who handles tourism events for us. And then in addition to that, there is a bullet point list of the several related services that they provide. So they provide a lot of promotion marketing for our events to promote tourism in the city. So this money, $25,000, was recommended by the Tourism Committee. Staff also recommends approval of this. It was a budgeted item to come out of the Tourism Fund, and I can take any questions.
Okay. Mr. Oric?
Josh, who is the representative for the city of Pekin for this?
Amy McCoy is the appointed person to be on the representative.
Okay, it's not a city of Pekin person?
Part of, part of the Chamber's contract, that was our tourism entity that the council approved a few weeks back. I guess it works hand in hand with that. It is a separate appointment, so if the council wanted to change that, and the mayor wanted to change that, they could. But I think it's appropriate, given that Ms. McCoy runs our tourism events.
Okay. Do you know how long she's been the point person for the city?
I think since she's been the Chamber Director, so.
Three years, I believe, she's been our Chamber Director.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
No.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Excuse me, 6-1, my goodness. Chair would now entertain a motion for 8.2, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance number 4192-24/25, amending Pekin City Code, Chapter 7, Article 1, Section 7 regarding food and beverage tax on home-based business, be approved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Hoheimer and second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossie, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor, in short, this is a reference to a home-based business. I'm going to have Economic Development Director Joshua Ray speak to this a little further.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. So the city staff recently received an inquiry from a potential or prospective home-based bakery. Proactively, I might say, they reached out to the city asking about licensure and taxation before they started operating. And so they wanted to know about the food and beverage tax on their business. Looking at the current code language, we do think that it would impose such a tax on home-based operations, but the language is kind of vague. So rather than kind of make that policy choice, staff is essentially asking you to, as a council, make a conscious decision on whether to impose the food and beverage tax on home-based businesses. Staff doesn't really have a particular recommendation either way, it's not going to be a huge financial impact either way, but it's more of a equity consideration. So there might be a perceived or real unfairness to, you know, the brick-and-mortar stores downtown, that they get taxed and home-based don't. On the other hand, the council might want to purposely not impose the tax on home-based businesses to promote entrepreneurship and Pekin grown businesses that will likely stay here if they open up a store. So up for your consideration, and if this ordinance is voted down, staff will probably bring back another clarifying ordinance that clarifies they are not subject to the tax.
Any comments? Ms. Hoheimer?
You know, I really don't think it's something we should even be looking at. I think about people who have chickens in their backyard. And my son lives in St. Louis, he buys his eggs from his neighbor. Should she be taxed? You know, I mean, I think we're going to get down to splitting hairs. If it, somebody's making birthday cakes for your friend's birthdays, you know, several times a year, is that really a business? I would, I mean, if they're making 100 loaves of bread a day and selling them at the grocery store, I think that's a situation we need to look at. And I think the Health Department needs to look at it. But I think with these little, I think that we need to encourage entrepreneurship and get people to want to do things, to make their lives better. And I don't think just making them cough up five cents every time they sell a donut. You know? My personal opinion.
Mr. Anken?
Also, if they're successful in this business, they could turn that into a brick-and-mortar business. If, and then that would move over to the tax.
Agreed.
If I could clarify something, Councilman Hoheimer, that you said. If they are selling it to the grocery store that then resells it, it would not be, either way, it would not be subject to this tax. We don't tax wholesale, we only tax when they send it to the end user through the retail. So this would only be applying to someone who would be selling the 100 loaves to their entire, you know, subdivision, right? And people pulling up in other driveways and, you know, picking things up and things like that. And I, for the most part, the way the Finance Department works on, from a tax standpoint, if you're minimally involved in the economy, you know, if you're just baking a, you know, a birthday cake once a month for, you know, a couple neighbors, that's really not what we are pursuing. But the home-based, you know, since COVID, a lot of people work from home, right? And so it is, I mean, all governments are sort of struggling with dealing, you know, with that. We also have, unrelated to this, but parallel, you know, like Airbnb is something that we are actually also trying to to get our arms around, because they have not been paying taxes, even though they are subject to it. It's the enforcement side that we're really struggling with. So it is a, it's not going to be the last time that you're going to have to think through, you know, people working from home and how we deal with that, whether it's tax or regulation.
Mr. Nutter?
I got a couple of questions. So the current business is a home-based business, is that correct?
Correct, although I don't think they're operational yet. There are certainly others.
So let's exclude bakery. So there's other businesses out there, home-based, that don't pay taxes, jewelry.
Cutting hair.
All kinds of stuff. So now we have a situation that's specifying bakery. So I don't know what the Health Department rules and regs are on all of that. So is this individual going to be baking at home and bringing the product to a brick-and-mortar and selling it?
So one thing I want to clarify, this isn't just for bakeries, it would be any food, any food type of business that would be subject to the food and beverage tax. So if they were making chocolate bars and selling them to end users, it'd be the same situation. There are health regulations regarding it, and particularly when you're getting into bakeries and you're using dairy products, there's, you know, a different level of cottage license that I think maybe Mr. McQuaid could speak to better than I can. So that is one method for our potential enforcement, is working with the county Health Department. But again, how well are they able to enforce, you know, a person that makes one cake a month? So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Kind of yes and no.
Okay.
But let's say an individual bakes a whole bunch of stuff at home, takes it into a brick-and-mortar, they're still going to have to charge the fire, or the sales tax, food and beverage tax.
Right.
So it's not a tax on a home base, it's actually a tax on a brick-and-mortar business.
That would be accurate if they take it to a local, you know, if, I think there is a bakery potentially opening downtown that's, doesn't want to do donuts at their location, because they don't want to have to have a fryer.
Sure.
So if they had a home-based person bringing in donuts to their location, you know, that's kind of the situation you're looking at there. But again, we wouldn't be charging, we wouldn't be tracking down the wholesaler, we would be tracking down the retailer.
Right.
So if they're whole, if they're retailing from their house, that's more the situation we're talking about here, should the tax be applicable to them.
Okay, thank you.
This is also food for immediate consumption as well.
Right.
So there is a difference between food that's prepared for wholesale and food that's prepared for immediate consumption. So just Kroger's, like, for example, they used to have the deli, you know, where you can go in and sit down and eat the food. That would be subject to a food and beverage tax, whereas the grocery food that someone goes to purchase is not. But they would pay, I don't even think there's a sales tax on groceries, there still is, okay. So that's the difference between the two.
Thank you. Anyone else?
After what Roy said, I know at Kroger's in their deli, they sell Subway sandwiches. Now, would that be subject to this tax? Because that's going to be taken and eaten at home, it's made.
So this, we actually, I think you could get a lot of different opinions on it, but my understanding and interpretation is, for instance, if it's, let's talk about donuts, right? If you get the donuts from Hostess, that, you know, the little white powdered ones that are already in a prepackaged thing, that's groceries. that are already in a prepackaged thing, that's groceries. Because it's prepackaged that way. If they prepare it on site, wrapping it up in cellophane, you, that is going to be called food and beverage. Because they're actually preparing it there on site. It's just like a restaurant carryout. You know, so, so it's, that's going to be also be prepared food for the food and beverage tax. So that's kind of the distinction is where is it being prepared?
I haven't checked it, but, well, of course, I haven't bought one, but I, I do know at Kroger's, you could buy like a Subway sandwich in their deli.
Right.
So that should be subject, when you cash out, to the food and beverage tax.
Yes, and when we, we do our food and beverage, you know, we have a person dedicated to doing the business taxes and such, and Kroger's, Walmart, you know, all of them, they are also big payers in our food and beverage. And they, it's not all of their food that they're selling.
Right.
Right? It's, it's a smaller percentage and, and as I said, the, the bigger companies, I think it's easier for them to actually understand the distinctions, but that's, that's our understanding of it.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to take our vote? Or do you have something else?
And I, I will add, I, we estimated that there, we thought that there were a half a dozen of these currently going on as far as the, the bakeries, to our understanding around town currently, that are home-based.
Okay. I do, it was brought up to me here, I do want to, the, the call to be clarified. A yes is to tax them for home. A no is not. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
No.
Councilmember Abel.
No.
Councilmember Hills.
No.
Councilmember Nutter.
No.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
No.
Mayor Burris.
No. Motion fails one, six. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point three, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that resolution number one, four, three, dash, twenty-four, dash, slash, twenty-five, approving the TIF building improvement program be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abel, second by Ms. Hoheimer. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have Josh Ray speak on this as well.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city has previously published program guidelines and requirements for competitive TIF grants. Staff has adjusted some of the specifics and that's been reviewed by the EDAC, and so they're before you tonight. I just wanted you all to basically bless the program before I put it out there as a call for projects. And then the idea is for the month of June to allow people to apply under these program guidelines that are in the packet. And at the end of June, we'll collect all those applications and start reviewing them, prioritizing them, and the council will ultimately have the discretion to fund all of them, some of them or none of them, at whatever level you like. But the basics of the program are that it's a total of, I think I have a typo there, it's supposed to be a hundred and ten thousand dollars per what's available in the budget. And the application is the standard TIF application, but I would also put out this, you know, a couple-page, three-page program guidelines that explains eligibility for the program, that explains the eligible types of improvements. It explains that the project may reimburse up to 50% of verified eligible expenses. They have to maintain the improvements for at least five years, you know, all of those types of things. And then a couple of things that we are making sure we add to the program are, one, we get a IRS Form W-9 from all awardees, or applicants, rather, which is required for tax purposes. And then, number two, we're also going to make sure that they do get their final inspections before we're writing any checks. I don't know if that's been a real problem in the past, but it's something that we, we should certainly address. So also, you know, optional documentation, I don't know if the council wants to require any of these things, but some things to, at least for applicants to consider are getting competitive quotes. You know, I put in there at least two quotes as highly encouraged. And if they don't get multiple quotes, maybe that's a reason to not fund a project, up to you all. Photographs of the property, renderings, financial estimates, if it's like a new business coming to town. And then I put in there some evaluation criteria. So what I have planned here is that the Economic Development Advisory Committee would be that first line that would look at all of the projects. And my best guess is we might get 20, or 15 or 20 applications, based on people I've talked to. And they will, you know, spend a meeting or two looking at all of the projects, prioritizing them based on their impact, based on their, you know, adherence to the program, all of those evaluation criteria. And then whatever they've prioritized, we would bring what we can fund with a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the city council. We'll give you the information on all of the applications, so if you decide to change things around, you can do whatever you like, but we'll bring the actual agreements and, and proposals for those projects that we can fit within this current year. And if, and if you just didn't make it into this current year, doesn't mean it's a bad project, doesn't mean it's being turned away, just, you know, come back next year when we've got more, potentially more money. So if there's any questions on the guidelines or how, you know, I intend to put out the program, I'm happy to go through anything else.
Counsel.
Mr. Nutter.
First of all, thank you for addressing this. It's been an ongoing problem for years on how the allocations are made, how much money we have, how much money we don't have. So looks, looks good, a lot better, more definitive. My question to you is, is we got the dollar amount that's allocated, what do we do about all the commitments that we've made in the past that we haven't paid?
So that, this hundred and ten that was budgeted is in addition to all of the commitments that were also budgeted.
Okay.
So we will be able to fulfill, in the current budget, we'll be able to fulfill all of our prior agreements, as well as this hundred and ten, up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
If some of those agreements, you know, their one year to finish their projects is coming up in August, if, you know, a fifty-five thousand dollar one has not been finished at that point, maybe later on in the year, we can open up another call for projects or the council, you can give me direction, what you'd like to do with that money, you know, we, we can have that conversation.
So funding that we already allocated project doesn't go through, it's just going to bump up what dollar amount is available.
Correct. Right, yeah, if, if the council doesn't extend it.
Fits the criterias and everything.
There's, there's at least one situation I know of that a previous agreement, a person we have an agreement with reached out to me and said that, you know, they're having pretty serious, I don't want to say that out loud, but there's a reason that they might want to have that extended. So if we were going to extend an agreement, of course, we'd bring it back to council for your consideration. But yeah, this, this hundred and ten is in addition to all of those previously agreed to terms.
My last question is, does all this really have to go to Jacob and Klein for approval? Or are we smart enough internally to figure out what the eligible expenses are? Or is Jacob and Klein just going to be the checkoff?
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're a checkbox for sure. You know, they check and make sure that we're following the law when we do it, but it's not, they don't spend a lot of time on it. It's not terribly complicated. These are pretty simple, you know, something like the call-in deal is a very complicated deal that took a lot of their time. These, I just send an email off to Nick Nelson and Gwen and say, here's, here's the project, here's the expenses. And then they send back a, a resolution or an ordinance for you all to consider with those included.
Okay. Yep, good job on this. Good job.
Anyone else? Mr. Hills.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I'd just like to say that I would still like to see this money go towards our road projects. I'm not against small businesses asking for TIF money, but in the particular circumstance that we are right now with our funding for different things, I think this certainly would help us out with our streets and infrastructure. With that being said, for those that do support this, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, so it shows a hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be available, plus an extra two hundred and fifty thousand for future programs, larger projects, for a total of three hundred and seventy thousand. And it says for the smaller projects, that there could be funding approved up to fifty thousand dollars each in any TIF district. I think that would probably be better suited for everybody that supports this, for that to be maybe around ten or fifteen thousand dollars. That way, more businesses would have an opportunity to get some of that money, rather than just giving it all to two businesses. Last thing I wanted to bring up, so it says down here at the end that neither of the residential TIFs will financially support this program. So are those set up, the residential TIF districts, are those set up exactly the same way as the other ones, where all that money can be transferred from one TIF district to another? Does that include the residential TIF districts when we're talking about transfer of that money?
Yeah, as long as they're contiguous, they can be transferred between any of the TIF districts. And that's why I wanted to make the point in here that the residential dollars will not be funding these commercial projects. And it's written that way into the actual program that you're all going to approve tonight, that the expenses are going to be from the three, you know, commercial TIF districts. And we only, when we didn't budget any money to come out of the residential TIF district, so if we were even going to do that, it would have to be a budget amendment taken to council.
But that will, that will remain that way every you, every year moving forward then too, correct?
That would be my intention, yes.
Because that would be, that would be the way that this particular development policy that we're getting ready to vote on, it would never include the residential TIF districts.
Correct. Yeah, unless they change it in the future, but my intention and recommendation would be to not.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, sir. I just want to clear, or add on to one of the comments you made there. It's, it's a perfectly fair point to say that you should do more amount of smaller grants. The other idea is that you do fewer but more impactful grants. So if you do, you know, a, a ten, ten thousand dollar grants, maybe you get some awnings and some signs downtown, but if you do a couple fifty thousand dollar grants, maybe you get a whole transformation of a facade. The way that in the last community I worked in, you know, they did a hundred thousand dollars a year, and it was a much smaller community, much smaller budget, but they wanted to prioritize their downtown. And over the course of four years, they probably did, I don't know, a dozen projects at that level, and it really transformed downtown, just doing one, two, or three, or four projects a year at a higher level. They funded up to 75%. So that's the philosophy that I had drafted this in, is that if there were really good projects that were, you know, a hundred thousand dollar project, the council could fund up to 50% of that, or more. You know, you certainly have the latitude to fund however you like. These are just the guidelines that we're drafting. But yeah, it's, it's also a perfectly fair statement to say that you might want to fund more projects at a lower value. Totally up to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abel.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Anken.
Aye.
Councilmember Orick.
Aye.
Councilmember Hills.
No.
Councilmember Nutter.
Aye.
Mayor Burris.
Aye. Motion passes six, one. Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point four, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that resolution number one, four, four, dash, twenty-four, slash, twenty-five, approving budgetary spending for replacement backup IT devices at the wastewater treatment facility and the Beacon Police Department be adopted. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hills, second by Mr. Abel. Mr. Dossi?
Thank you, Mayor. The current backup solutions at the wastewater treatment facility and the police department are past their end of life. We have used the recommended replacement as our main backup solution for three years and have found the product, product adequate. Therefore, we would like to replace the same product but sized appropriately at the other two locations. SHI International Corporation provided a quote under Sourcewell Technology Products and Solutions Contract, number one, two, one, nine, two, three, dash, SHI, which is, which is a state contract that was competitively bid for seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, eighty-four cents, with two backup devices, appropriate licensing, unlimited cloud storage, and maintenance plans. We ask, staff is asking council to approve the budgeted expenses, four, seventy-five, seven, eight, three, point one, or eight, four. And Dave Hess, Network Support Administrator is available for any questioning.
Any questions? Mr. Hill, or, excuse me, Orick.
What's the breakdown between the two, between the wastewater treatment and the police on the amount of money being spent?
Dave.
I don't know if.
Bob's looking here a quick.
Yes, we are, it's, for the police, it's twenty thousand and, I don't know. Actually, I don't know the answer to that, Dave.
Between the hardware for the PDs, around twenty. The hardware for the waste treatment is fifteen. And then it's about a fifty-fifty split on the maintenance. And then the cloud storage and everything. The police department's device is larger in storage capacity, because they, they have a lot more to store with their digital evidence and everything than the waste treatment plant does. But then with the cloud storage, unlimited is unlimited, so the pricing on that is the same. And then the maintenance on the device and replacement and everything, that's a standard contract. So it, it's, there's no differentiation on that. We pay the same for the device we have that backs up our main server. It's the same on each of the devices.
So then out of this seventy-five thousand that we're going to spend tonight, twenty-five thousand's for equipment, then we're going to have a fifty thousand a year reoccurring cost?
No, that is for right around five years. They.
So the fifty thousand will be spread out over five years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I won't be, well, I'll be back once, right before I retire, to have it renewed.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, we, we get multi-year on stuff because, you know, we, we know we're going to, that technology has a lifespan of at least five years. And nice thing with the brand we're going with is every three years, they've replaced the, the actual hardware. So, you know, we get a hardware refresh with that, and that's part of the maintenance.
So then we'll spend twenty-five thousand for equipment, then ten thousand this year, ten thousand the next five years?
Correct.
We're not going to give them all the money this year, it's going to be ten thousand each year?
Well, no, we pay for the maintenance upfront, so that we get the, we get a, it's, it's basically, we pay for three years of maintenance, but we get five by buying it all at one time.
Okay.
We realize savings that way.
Okay. So as long as they stay in business, we're okay. They go bankrupt, we're out.
The company we're buying from has had a long track record. They're about a seventeen-year-old company.
Okay.
And you hear their ads all the time.
Okay. So the seventy-five thousand carries us for five years?
Correct.
Okay.
At, uh, two locations. Our location here will come up in another two years.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Pardon me? Oh, excuse me.
So a little bit to piggyback off what Lloyd was saying. I know, I think we've had some conversations in the past about taking these expenditures and charging them to the appropriate line item for the appropriate department. And I don't know, this seems to be another one of those examples where this entire amount is being charged to the IT department, even though it's kind of created from the police department and wastewater treatment facilities. So are we, are we still doing that? Because I did notice there was a couple similar payments on the accounts payable report that were questionable about that also. It seems like we're just taking anything that has to do with a telephone, anything that has to do with computers, and it's all getting charged to the ID department, even though it may be a separate department that's creating that expense. Because I don't see, it says budgeted amount, twenty thousand, four sixty, and fifty, where's that budgeted at?
at?
That would be in my hardware line item, which is the 599802, and then the maintenance line item was, which is 538000.
Right, but when we see this as a council and we see that's the budgeted amount for the police department and the wastewater treatment plan, where that's budgeted is in the IT department, commingled with a lot of other money. So we don't see that itemized in these separate departments, even though they have those same specific line items in those departments. It's being charged to your department.
Because it's part of the city network that we maintain. It, it's not an actual expense that that department takes care of, you know, they wouldn't spec out their own server, they wouldn't spec out their own backup device, you know, it wouldn't be like, say, a piece of police technology that they would go out and purchase. This is more of like the backbone infrastructure of the city, and that's why it's expensed in IT.
Okay.
It, it'd be akin to, say, the, the parking lot lights out here being billed to the street department. You know, yeah, they're at City Hall, but they fall under the, the street department because they're part of that infrastructure of, you know, the street lighting.
So even though, and I hear you, Dave, I'm listening, so even though the wastewater treatment plant is considered an enterprise fund, we're going to subsidize them with the IT department for computer hardware and maintenance and things like that? That won't come out of their separate department?
I'm, I'm going to say, I, I should have raised that issue when it was going through approvals internally. I, I agree with you, I think the most appropriate place to charge the wastewater part would be to wastewater, to split that out and put it to the wastewater department. That, that would be the, because, exactly as you said, because it's an enterprise fund, with police, whether it was police or fire or street, since they're in the general fund, that doesn't matter, that the IT department is also in the general fund and, and we often will just do that. And, and that's just something that I missed, but we, we should charge, and it is totally appropriate to charge that to the wastewater department, its portion. And so that would be my intention, would be to, to reclass that into that when the bill comes. Because you, you are correct.
But that wouldn't require an amendment to the budget?
No, no. I believe that we have enough room in the wastewater fund for, for that. We did, and, and this is, you know, maybe leading part of the confusion, it used to be like basically all IT expenses went to the IT department, and considering, you know, their staffing levels and workload, as well as just, you know, trying to get it, responsibility to, to go to the people that sort of run different projects, we did move out of police mostly, a little bit of fire as well. The concept of, for software in particular, if the technology is exclusive to a department, right? So not, we're not talking about like Outlook or Microsoft Excel, which everybody uses, that, all that still stays with the IT department. But if there is software that's just police department or just fire department, we tried to move those into those departments so that you could more accurately see that that's a, that's just theirs, and it's, you know, it's exclusive theirs. And that way, if we need to renew it, if we need to go out to bid to get a different kind, then it's on them to know their specs because it's exclusively a police kind of issue. And I will say that that's a new concept here, I think it returned it back to the way we used to do it, and we probably didn't do it perfectly in every instance, so there might be some growing pains to that. But that's kind of the overarching philosophy, and Dave said it, like, most network backbone still just goes to the IT department, but in this instance, since it's identifiable, that it's, you know, pieces are exclusive for wastewater, I think you actually are know accounting better than I did last week when I was reviewing this.
What about cell phones? Where would you, where would those fall into place on that?
Cell phones, in my opinion, should get costed accounted out to the individual departments. And I, I haven't looked into cell phones much that we've been doing, but that again is easy compared to some other kinds of technology that's just, you know, like, hey, you know, our internet access maybe is just, you know, we have one big package, and some departments may have higher or lower use, but the number of cell phones is pretty easy to cost account out.
All right, I appreciate the answers, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Nutter?
So, understand this, so, we're going to do this, parts going to the police when the bill comes in.
Yep.
And then the stuff that goes to wastewater goes to wastewater?
Correct.
So...
But the, the start for police would not go to police, it would just stay in IT?
I'm sorry, I mean IT.
Yes, correct.
So wastewater, even though there's zero budgeted, so we'll have a negative number in there.
Yeah, but they, this would go under other contractual or capital. I mean, like, remember how the budget is now by group? It's by major category, so they would have in the overall sewer department, you know, the whole fund, they would have enough, you know, they have flexibility to, to take contractual because they're going to have a bunch of that going on anyway. And if at the end of the year we start coming up short, then we would come back to you guys for a budget transfer between the general fund, for instance, if we're under, using the IT fund and overusing wastewater, we would come back to you at a later point.
Okay, so other contractual right now has got 25 grand in there, so we got it covered?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero.
Chair would now entertain a motion for eight point five, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 146 dash 24 slash 25 approving MFT resolution for Court Street be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Anken, second by Mr. Oric. Mr. Dossie?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is needed to allocate motor fuel tax funds to pay for a portion of the Court Street construction project from Stadium Drive to Hilltop Drive. The resolution is for $4,676,890, which is what was budgeted in the motor fuel tax fund for Court Street. This resolution is required by Illinois Department of Transportation for MFT funds to be utilized. And Josie is available to answer any questions.
Counsel have questions for Ms., or for Josie?
Josie, can you, off the top of your head, what was, remember the bid from UCM for the project from Hilltop to Stadium?
You want to know the exact bid price? Is that what you're asking?
Close enough, yeah. I tried to find it, and I ran out of time, so if you can get it to me later, that's fine.
Excuse me, I just had a question on, we're requesting 4.6 million and budget amount 5.6, and it says the remaining funds will be 5.6. Shouldn't...
The, the remaining funds is the remaining funds at this present moment. That's always how we've done it, so. We haven't spent any so far this fiscal year, so that's correct.
But have we reduced? The 6 million? Or 5.6 million? So how much money will be in MFT after we pass this?
I can get that number for you, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I'm just going by what we see here that, to me, we should have approximately a million dollars left.
So we take into account how much we have right now, we have projects that we have yet to pay for because we haven't had a bill from IDAP come in yet, so we are just kind of, you know, holding back that money. And then we have money that we receive yet, you know, everyone.
Right, as we go along, yeah.
So, how much we have at this present moment, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, I could, I could get it for you, but that number's obviously constantly changing, so...
All right, thank you. What was budgeted, Lloyd's already been spoken for. I don't know what we brought in since then, but the rest of that money there that's in the budget, that's for the Island Town Road and Parkway projects that we haven't paid yet.
Councilmember Nutter, I have a bid price that was 9.96-ish million dollars for the, for the project. And just a reminder, some of that is being paid for by Illinois American Water, about 650,000 is being paid because that was their portion that's split out for the water main.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Oric?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hills?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero.
We have now come down to any other business to come before the council. Mr. Dossie, you and your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put on everybody's radar, July 4th is the opening of the time capsule that's buried out front in City Hall. Staff, Dick McQuitt in particular thanked Debbie Montgomery and Jared Olar for helping us kind of track down some of the items from previous time capsules. We did locate those items. We are in the process of planning to put items on display, but we are working right now, we're probably going to dig it up a little bit ahead of time because we don't know what it's going to take to open, what's in the ground, and there's been some recommendations on preserving this, so we're kind of excited about it. We have tracked down a lot of the historical information on this, it's very interesting, and we're kind of putting together plans for the future capsule that'll go in the ground for our descendants that'll be sitting up at the council chairs and at these tables in the future, so that's what I have. I think Fire Chief Reese had some information on a golf outing coming up.
Chief Reese?
Thank you. Just a quick little plug for the Third Annual Heart of the Dragon Charity Golf Outing, it'll be on June 8th this year, and anybody who's seen that on the internet knows that I've been quoted as saying it's the best golf outing of the summer. Still room for more teams, it's a great time, and all of those funds stay here locally to help families and kids and people in need.
Very good, thank you.
And if, if I could, you all would have gotten, you should have gotten a paper copy of the investment report for April.
No, they did not.
They, they did not.
Right here.
Oh, you will be getting a copy of something right this moment that Sue is going to hand out. So, so there is an April investment report, I think you were emailed it earlier too, but I also included the March one. I still want to tweak this and make it better for comparative month to month, so that's why I'm attaching there, you know, just the prior month. But you will also find, I, can you hand it out, Sue, if you don't mind? Sorry, it was supposed to end up in your folders. This is just a first pass at, we're, we're trying to up our game as far as financial information that we, we give you.
We appreciate that.
So, it's just a first draft of, just some graphical analysis of, this is just home rule sales tax over a period of time. So you have two different graphs. I did just notice that at the bottom of the, the first page for the, the home rule sales tax, that's this one with the sort of step ladder thing for the budgets, that my dates are off by a year on the bottom, so, you know, don't hold me overly to that, they're just all off by one year. But this is just a, one of, an example of some of the larger revenues that we're going to want to, to give you better information to sort of, so you, so you can see as, you know, whether we're projecting, we're going to be hitting our target, our budget on sales tax, you know, it's not something that you should just get, oops, at the end of the year we were short, or we did really well. We want to start giving it to you on a, on a month by month or quarter by quarter, depending on the, on the revenue, so you can sort of see how much it varies from month to month, and, you know, sort of averaging out whether we're, you know, we're doing well relative to revenue. So this is just a first pass as an example of one revenue stream, and we're going to continue every month to try and give you a little bit better, more information.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a question. Bob, would you by chance know what new car sales are in our sales tax, because, how significant it is?
I can get back to you on that, I know Josh knows off the top of his head. It is, it is diff, you know, there is like, the state does a, a different, there's like a flat rate to things that are registered, but I'll have to look, and it, we can actually identify, we have how many dealerships roughly? Do we have three, I think, car dealerships?
Well, then the used cars would be there too. They wouldn't compare to them, I would say.
Correct. But I, I can get some more information back to you on that.
I'm just curious on...
We do have...
Yeah. How, how much of an impact they have on it, because a new car, that's a significant amount of money you pay for sales tax on it.
Right, right. And, and it is very cyclical as well.
Yes.
It is not, that is not a straight line like groceries and stuff.
That's why I would like to know what it is, how it could impact us.
They're also not subject to the home rule sales tax?
Correct.
Or BDD. They're exempt from the home rule sales tax.
Great.
Any other staff members?
I'll just, real quick, over the weekend, I don't know how much council's aware, but they did pass in the Senate the grocery tax.
Yes.
It looks like the IML had a lot of involvement. If it passes through the House, it looks like January 1st of '26, so we'll get all that information together as it comes out from the IML, and we'll present it to council at that time.
Thank you. I got a call from Representative Weaver on that as well. Thank you. Mr. Hills?
Just a couple quick questions on that accounts payable report. So there was a payment on there under miscellaneous line item, about $6,800 to an individual for farming out on Route 98. What are we paying?
Yeah, Rick, I can explain that. So what happened was during that land acquisition, we had a, we were going to sell that property on 98, we paid the farmers for their work for prepping the fields for planting, so we paid them their material costs, and we canceled their lease originally, but they're back farming now, so we'll have to deduct that from their gross pay at the end of the year.
Okay, okay, appreciate that. And then the other one was from McKee Environmental for asbestos, for property cleanup fees. I thought, didn't, Mr. Dossie, didn't at least one or two of those code enforcement guys get their license to do that, so we wouldn't have to contract that out?
They, they still have to come out and have the oversight, we can't, we can't monitor our own work, if that makes sense, that you have to have somebody who's independent do that.
They still have to send it to a lab and for...
Yeah. So they, they, we can go out and we could, we can identify, we can send off for testing, but when we go to abate, we have to have oversight from another...
So what, what we do essentially then, as, as in-house with our code enforcement officers, we just determine whether there is or is not asbestos in there?
Correct.
And then if there is?
And then if there is, right. So it's like we have to have somebody monitor that we're doing it correctly. We can't say we're doing it correctly, if that makes sense.
Okay. All right. That's the only ones I had, thanks.
Mr. Abel?
Oh yeah, just a shout out to Troy Tarter, the Pekin Pride soccer team. They had another one of their tournaments, they had 90 teams in Pekin, that's fans, parents for the weekend, and every year it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. He made the comment on his interview on TV that he wants to go for 120, 130 teams. They raised a little over $10,000 for scholarships, so I think that's a pretty good impact for how he, how they control 90 teams in one weekend is beyond me, but more power to him, and Troy does a well of a job on that.
Very good. I heard 92, I was going to mention that, but thank you. And there was over 1,000 people there.
Yeah.
Well over 1,000. Well over 1,000. Ms. Hoheimer?
Um, I'd just like to give a shout out to our mayor.
Oh.
For yesterday.
Oh.
That was very nice, at the Birth of Frank Center in Morton. Um, we saw some, what?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, um, World War II veterans, and wow, the stories they told, it was just fabulous, um, listening to them. Don't think there was a dry eye in the house.
True.
And, uh, it was just a wonderful thing John Ackerman put on, uh, our mayor spoke, some other mayors spoke, and it was just a lovely, lovely afternoon, I was very proud to be there.
Thank you, and, and you guys are both still in my thunder, 'cause I was gonna say that, but there, there was, um, over 500 people there is what I heard.
It was packed.
It was very humbling experience. Mr. Orick?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, Mr. Anken? Mr. Nutter?
I have a question for Bob. My favorite person.
Yes, sir.
Insurance claims, where there's accidents caused by other individuals.
You mean, non-employees?
Non-employees, yes. You knock down poles, we knock down streetlights, we knock things down.
Yeah.
What's, what's the procedure to recoup those expenses? Do we have a procedure or policy in place to do that?
Yeah, um, it, it's sort of goes a couple different directions, I mean, sometimes we're actually getting private reimbursements if people didn't...
Sure.
You know, the insurance didn't cover it or something like that. Um, we do end up getting, uh, payments from other insurance companies, you know, because, you know, you use your car, you hit us, it's your insurance that has to pay us. Um, and then we also, well, our own insurance sometimes covers it as well, um, and so there's a whole, you know...
Multitude of options.
Correct, correct, and we, it, it comes in lots of different ways.
So we aren't just letting it slide, we're recouping?
No, no, I mean, there are times, obviously for, there's de minimis amounts, that, you know, somebody knocks down, you know, a very small sign or something like that, that, you know, we don't end up, it's below our deductible and, and such, and that, so there are times that things go un, uncollected.
Sure, sure.
Um, but no, we, it is between HR, uh, and their risk manager, as well as, um, our accounts receivable people, um, there's a lot of activity in that area.
Okay. And last but not least, I hope this doesn't steal some of your thunder either.
All right, let's hear it again.
Pekin Civic Chorus.
Nope.
Did, you didn't have that one on the list?
I didn't.
I was asked to put a little, uh, PR out there for the Pekin City Chorus this weekend, uh, I can't remember the dates, I think it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, so four days. Chris, you should've used that, you could've got that. But, uh, I hear it's a great program, uh, a lot of great people are gonna be involved, so if you have time to go to that, uh, certainly try to attend it, so. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Well, um, since my thunder was taken from soccer, but yes, I heard it was a fabulous event, um, the other thing was, down here at the riverfront, we had Twisted Cat, and their tournament. And there was 55 boats, last year was the first year they were here, and there was 36, so it is growing, so this year was 55. And, um, I didn't quite stay till the finish, but I'm pretty certain the biggest fish was a 21.8-pound catfish, and, um, yeah. Those people that fish, love it. So, that was very, uh, they're, they're gonna come back again, and they, they are just trying every year for it to be bigger and bigger and better and better, so I appreciate them coming to the city of Pekin. The World War II veterans, um, it was, there was 17, there was a couple that didn't actually show up, but there was 17, there was eight from Pekin, so I, it was a true honor to, um, acknowledge them, to give them, you know, we gave them the city challenge coins, um, and just, it was heart, heartwarming, listening to everything that they had to say, um, and as Karen said, it, it did bring a tear to many of our eyes. And, um, they were so humble at, you know, I really wasn't involved in combat, maybe one of them said that, and I'm like, you were there, you fought for our freedom, we can never thank you enough. So it was wonderful, wonderful event, and the place was packed. So, I, I just wanted to say, once again, thank you to Elaine, or not Elaine, excuse me, Yvonne, um, and I, I think of you guys as Buffy One and Buffy Two. But, uh, for bringing something so positive, um, in front of the council here, for us to, um, recognize a nice young student, um, and I can't thank them enough, so thank you. I do wanna say, um, I did send out a letter to Keith Dunkelbarger dismissing him from the EDAC for interfering with city business, so, um, we did get a response back from him, so he will no longer be on EDAC, I needed the council to know that. Other than that, um, Chair would now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move that council move to Executive Session 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 C11, Threatened Litigation, and C6, Setting a Price for Sale of Real Estate.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Anken, second by Mr. Orick, um, and I believe there's no action that will be taken as we come back out, correct? Correct. Um, Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Councilmember Anken?
Aye.
Councilmember Orick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilst?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoheimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Nutter?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Aye.
Mayor Burris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero, we will be going into executive with no action taken as we come out at 6:50.